Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From the right, I have Janelle Carter and Mike Miller. From my left, we have Karina Hernandez, Sean Heitman, Ben Fletcher. At the center table with me, to my right is Paulette Nupple, the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schuetti, the Superintendent of Schools, and I am Dee Niplock. Are any of you wanting to talk during public comment? I'm going to justify that step. Read with me the mission statement. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindsets to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. Stand at your angle and join me in the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to the agenda?
Yeah, we, after it was posted, we had a deletion. We had inadvertently included the parent contract, which we had already approved. So we have taken that off the agenda. Also, there was a couple numerical changes on the transportation insurance policy because we received an email today that had some adjusted numbers for that. So that was, that's only been reviewed today. Is there some else?
All right. An unusual number of changes for the personnel consent agenda. And Paulette and Dee and Theron have a sheet in front of me that kind of goes over those, so I will just read those. Appointments. Hannah Al Nasroa, sixth grade teacher at Lenahan Elementary School. She will replace Mary McDowell. Sherry Logan, library parent educator at high school, replacing Tasha Ham. Elizabeth Warner will be a fifth grade teacher at Lenahan, replacing Katie Towns. Amy Sather will be an art teacher at Miller, replacing Bailey Clammer. And Macy Fritz will be an assistant softball coach at high school. And I don't know if we had anyone in that role to replace. And then I have one resignation that's not on the sheet. And that is Katie Hillby, kindergarten teacher at Woodbury Elementary.
Are there changes on the agenda? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Miller Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
Anthony, come on in. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank Anthony. And I should also hope that Raleigh would be here for their three years of service to the district. We all came on together with kind of a plethora of new administrative hires. And Raleigh's out vacation with family and out east right now. But had the opportunity at our awards recognition ceremony to both mention Raleigh, who was in attendance, and Anthony, who could be there to our nine hundred employees. But I just wanted to thank him for everything he's done for our district.
Thank you very much.
Wish him the best in Johnston.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You know, we kind of had the passing of the torch. Do you want me to speak to that now?
You certainly may.
So Nora, if you'd like to. So I am pleased to introduce to you Dr. Nora Ryan, who is on the agenda to be approved. Coming, background check coming through. She's our new Director of Human Resources.
She looks like she's sweating over there.
Nora comes to us from Iowa State University. She's the Inclusion Services Coordinator there. In her youthful career, she's had a number of great experiences working basically for the President's Office in Washington DC, as well as her passion in statistics. So I think hopefully she'll be able to help provide you all kinds of metrics in the foreseeable future in that realm.
That's great, Mike.
Her degrees are Spanish Education to begin with at the Iowa State University and a Master's Degree in Administration of Public Policy, I believe, is that right? From the Iowa State University. And then she went to George Washington University in Washington DC to get her PhD. And she's fluent in Spanish and also working on becoming fluent in sign language as well. So pretty exciting. She's got a wealth of experiences in the different capacities. She's served it all in themselves really well to HR. And she's very excited to get back in that world as she started when she graduated with her Master's. So walk with her.
Thank you so much.
Looking at the consent agenda, are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of June 3rd, June 10th, June 11th? Been busy. Any items of note in personnel, other than what you shared, Anthony?
No.
Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have a service agreement with MICA for transportation services for Bobcat University. We have three grant agreements with the state of Iowa for support of English learners. We have a counseling agreement with Life Connections. And we have a private camp contract with Marching Auxiliaries to host a summer dance. Open enrollments, we have two in, three out for 1920. Are there any items of note in the bills? Looking at donations, we have four hundred from the Tuesday Musical Club for new marching band uniforms. We have a $2,500 donation from JBS for the boys soccer program. We have an $1,800 donation from Marshalltown Convention and Visitors Bureau for one of the modular techs. And we have tools donated for the playground build at Woodbury from Marshalltown in the amount of $558.54. Any questions on those? Any questions on the financial report? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Carter Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries five zero one. Nobody on the pin sheet? Moving on to 401. We're ahead already by five minutes.
So as everyone is aware, Director Ross Harris had submitted his resignation from the board after much reflection on what the right thing to do, given his circumstances of needing to miss meetings up until possibly September or so. Ultimately, he submitted a letter of resignation effective June 7th, which starts the clock on the thirty days that the board has to appoint a member to fulfill the remaining four months of his term. Andrew pushed out communications advertising that today. It's going to be published in the paper tomorrow. And the public would have until July 1st to submit a petition if they so choose to force a special election. But in the meantime, we're going to be taking applications for that board appointment up until Thursday, June 27th, and with the intent of conducting interviews of prospective board candidates during the July 1st, third time.
Questions? May I have a motion to approve the resignation from Ross Harris, effective Friday, June 7th, 2019, as presented?
Regrettably so.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? The motion carries six zero. Stacy? Either microphone will work.
Okay, I got it. Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight to do the annual health report. I want to start off by just discussing our health office staff. As you know, we have nine nurses in our district. We just say that, and we have three health aides. I kind of want to give a shout out to our health aides. I don't know that they always get the credit that they deserve. And in our three largest buildings, Lenahan, Miller, and high school, we have these health aides that work very hard to help support us in our offices. We have very busy offices. We see a lot of kids daily in all of them, but certainly in our heavier populated buildings. And those health aides, they're certified in med passing, and they help us with minor procedures, and they help us a lot with paperwork, which of course is something that we all get kind of flogged with sometimes. So I'm going to move on to tell you that we will have a few changes in our health offices this year with the resignation of Ellie Mack from Woodbury. And we have Virginia's on, who resigned from Fisher. So we're currently, Mark and Nell are both setting up interviews. We'll be starting this week for interviewing for those physicians. So we will miss both of those nurses that were in those buildings, but we're looking forward to see who we will have next year in those spots. And I know, I'm moving on quickly here. Nursing services, I'm just going to go ahead and highlight a few of the things here. I always think it's important, I know that I've talked to you guys before, to share what we do in our health offices. And of course, you know, the main thing, obviously, we provide direct health services for our students, you know, from the medication administration to treatment, sick care, because there are so many other things that we do as well. We are obviously first responders to critical incidents that occur on our school properties. You know, our screening and referral, that is still a big portion of our role with our vision hearing and dental screens. We provide that specialized care for our kids with chronic health conditions, the diabetics, the seizure, the students with seizure disorders. Of course, you know, our G-tube feedings and those various needs as well. We also are, we provide, we promote a healthy school environment through education and teaching for students and staff, and I'm going to touch on that a little bit further on. And then, of course, we participate in the IEP as Bible Core Teams. And we are also coordinators of Medicaid building in each of our buildings, too. Lastly, on the list here, we do, we provide health services for our staff. And I think that's something that maybe some people aren't aware of. We see quite a few staff in our offices on a daily basis, you know, just either doing blood pressure checks or simple things like that. And they use us as resource as well, you know, with health questions and that. So then, I'm going to hit on a couple of other things here as far as the education and training that's performed by school nurses. I'm just going to, just a couple of things that I want to highlight, the health curriculum. So not this year, but the previous year, we did the health curriculum review, and there were some of us nurses that were involved with that. We did pick up some more curriculum education for nurses to present in the classrooms through that review. So our elementary nurses have gone into the classrooms, and they have actually used the curriculum. They went in as what you would call, just like the, they were guest speakers in the classes, you know, doing this health curriculum. And they expanded on the curriculum that was presented to them, and I think it was very successful. The students, you know, they see the school nurse as the health, you know, professional in their buildings. But also, I think now they see them as, you know, someone who can teach them and as a role model for them, looking at, you know, health and their futures, you know, staying healthy and, so I think that has been a very positive thing for us to be able to do that. And then I'm going to move down to, oh, sorry. I'm going to go down to the staff training, just something new that I want to update as well. So with our AED training and Disturb Teams, that is something new for this year as well. We, last year, the cardiac emergency response policy was approved. So each of our buildings now currently have AEDs. So we are very fortunate through some grants that we have applied for and most graciously gotten. We have AEDs in all of our buildings, and I think maybe you guys have, maybe have seen that we have fifteen AEDs now in our district. So the new ones this year, we were able to get one in our central office here, so for NLA and 4O. And so it's here in the building. And then we have one in the Lenahan Gym and Miller Gym, which now they have it in their academic area as well as their gym areas. So I feel like we're definitely able to, you know, provide cardiac services if needed in emergency situations. And Disturb Teams are, what that is, is each building has, they have at least five staff members who are trained in CPR and in the use of the AED. And it's reviewed annually and more frequently. We do little run-throughs at the high school quite frequently, just to make sure that we're all aware of what we need to do if a cardiac emergency does occur. And so again, I'm very pleased that we're able to provide that cardiac support in our district. And then I also want to highlight the last thing on that side there, too, where the Stop the Bleed training. That is a new, that was an initiative that came to us at the beginning of the school year through Marshalltown Emergency Management and Services. Kim Eldred, she applied for a grant and was able to get the Stop the Bleed kits for all of our buildings. It's been a wonderful thing. And along with that, the nurses were all trained to be trainers, and so we trained our staff. And so that is a very needed training. And what, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Stop the Bleed initiative, but you know, that came about after the stunning tragedies and the following, you know, events that occurred with that. And it's, so that bystanders are trained to help stop bleeds and hopefully save lives. So that will be an annual training now, too, for our staff as well. They will do it annually to make sure that they're up to date on that. And just looking through our committees and team that our nurses serve on, it varies a lot per building. These are just a list of them that the nurses have given to me, that some of us, you know, some of them serve on. The only thing I want to highlight, too, I didn't actually put it on here, but our nurses have all been very active in helping with community volunteerism through the tornado when that occurred. You know, there were nurses out there helping, you know, at ground level and in their buildings. And some of the other tragedies that occurred in our district this year, there were nurses on site helping and supporting their families and our students. So I just wanted to highlight that. And now, going to our district data, as of 10/1/18, the enrollment was 5,366. And of those, forty-six percent of our students list a health condition when they register for school. So that stays pretty constant for us. That's not, that, you know, that number is pretty much where we've been over the last several years. So almost half of our students list some form of a health condition. And that could be something as simple as, you know, as a vision, so that just by being in their classes, but of course, you know, it's all those chronic health conditions as well. And then, let's see, we break down to the five different health conditions that NASA asked us to track. Asthma, anaphylaxis, which is, you know, the larytral allergies, seizure disorders, type one diabetes mellitus, which would include, you know, our students that are on insulin and are type two diabetes mellitus. And right now, we don't have any in our district. Obviously, asthma is a biggie. We did track, we are tracking anxiety as well. Our numbers are a little iffy on that. We're trying to track anxiety and depression as well. We pulled those off of Infinite Campus, but there are different ways that you can list them. They're not all just under anxiety. There are various ways that they can be tagged in Infinite Campus. So I don't have those numbers for you right now, but that would be something that I'll have for you in the future. It's interesting to see where we're at with that. I'm sure none of you would be surprised. And then, we'll go ahead and go to our total health office visits. So this year, in all of our buildings, we had a total of 75,802 health office visits. Of course, when you break that down, the three big buildings, the high school and Miller and Lenahan, they obviously have the heavy, at the high school, I kind of think about nineteen thousand two hundred visits this year. And as you can see, the back to class and sent home and EMS, that doesn't total up to our seventy-five thousand, just as we normally haven't always equaled out, so where are those students? They, what happens is sometimes those students end up staying in our office, you know, maybe for, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes to rest, and then they're sometimes referred on to social worker or referred on to guidance counselor, and sometimes they do go back to class, but sometimes they don't get logged in. So I think that's where we've been at, the variation there. So a lot of visits. And that stayed, has stayed pretty consistent with where we have been in the last couple of years. And then, we will go to the health emergency plans for school. So the school nurses are involved in the IHPs and the EHPs, and that just kind of shows you what we have in each building, where they, where they kind of fall in. And again, you know, many of the public schools have higher health plans. And those are, the IHPs are any of our kids that have any chronic health conditions, and of course, if they have an IEP and they have health related issues, they have an IHP as well as any of our students from lecture, I mean, just sort of thing. Those are all created and updated as the nurses are going. And then, we'll go to the membership screening, and this is our immunization audit. So annually, every fall, Marshall County Public Health comes in and they do our health, our immunization audits. And we do, we do a pretty good job of that. We have a lot of students in and out from all over the world, and so we have to track that very closely as we, you know, enroll these students. And sometimes it's, it's a struggle to find the right ones, but somehow, some way we find them, and if not, we get them started here. And we start all over at the campus. We work very closely with our, with our Marshall County Public Health, as well as all of the physician's offices, making sure that the students, you know, access as quickly as we can, so they can get started in school. And then, let's see here. Just the state requirements, just again, these are all, the dental screens, hearing, vision, and the immunization audit, those are all requirements by the state, and those are all the role of the school nurse to make sure that we are compliant and have those audits ready when they have to be submitted to the state. And finally, Medicaid planning for our school-based services. So this year, we had approximately 104 students that we built Medicaid for, for those extra supports that were provided. And the gross reimbursement, as of May, we had 934,730. And each nurse in their respective building does the paperwork, coordinates it, and trains staff as well as, you know, filling out the paperwork. And then, it's all taken to the line for our out-of-bet program, the immune services. And then, finally, in inclusion, I just, students' health is directly related to his ability to learn. Today, our schools contain many students with various physical and mental health diagnoses, as well as behavioral and trauma-related problems. These students benefit from having a professional school nurse as part of their support team. We promote the health, wellbeing, academic success, and lifelong achievement of our students, keeping our students safe, healthy, and ready to learn as they try to learn how to work. Does anyone have questions, Scott?
One quick question.
Yes.
Medicaid, I was surprised at how much money that you're giving back from Medicaid in the last, is that much? I assume, but I'll ask anyway, are you maximizing that amount?
Ashley, yep, and that would be a good question to question, because he feels more than Ashley and Paulette, obviously, as well. I'm sure they are, and I tell you, we, we do, we try to find every student that is possible. We get a list of all of our students that are Medicaid eligible, and that comes through, that comes through the district. And then we, there are certain qualifications they have to have in order for us to bill. So they have to have an IEP, they have to have a diagnosis, and they have to be on Medicaid. So those are the three qualifiers, you know, for them to fit into that, that we can actually bill on. And then, we do have to have approval from their family to do that as well. And that's usually a recurring issue. But yes, it is a nice generator, and we do try to, we have another nurse that also helps with that, Toni Fries, the nurse at Lenahan, she helps to facilitate that, and she helps to look to make sure that we're capitalizing on students.
I think we have another provider, Toni Timberline?
Yes, yeah, Timberline.
Timberline. And they help monitor that and provide recommendations if there's more to be made.
Exactly.
And that's the gross reimbursement?
That's gross, yep.
Yes, so we get 100% of the federal Medicaid money, but then we have to turn around and send a portion of it back to the state for their share. So that's not the amount that you're going to see on our financial statements, because we don't get to keep it all.
I can tell you that. Matt sent me those numbers exactly, and I can't, I just wanted to bring them to you on the phone. All right, let's see. I think I tell you, I feel like it's almost half of that.
That's, if it's half, that's, I mean, that's close enough.
Yeah, I can tell you exactly what he gave me here. It is 554,250. That would be what he said is net reimburse. That right gave you, that is gross.
Other questions for Stacy?
Is the AED, is that used for sports events, too?
Yes. So we have, we have a portable one at the high school, and so our employee trainer, she has a power one that she takes out to the fields and cross-country events, so there is an AED. It should be, oh, there should be one house that we have, probably, that, at the roundhouse, we have three different ones that are down in that area. We don't have one on five, so we're in four. And now, which are our buildings, our larger buildings, where, you know, Lenahan, Miller, they have one in their, in their children's. That would probably be where, if we did have one, probably, it would be there. And that's for our students, but there are other abilities and that as well.
And Stacy is largely responsible for accessing the grant funding and the donations that are relying for us to get in that position. So thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks for your continued leadership and guidance. And anytime we have a issue or concern, which fortunately isn't that often, but Stacy's always joining on the spot to do what needs to be done, whether it's a kind of concern, building concern, that sort of thing. She was recognized with the Superintendent's Star for this year for excellence in service as well. So thank you for providing that leadership.
Thank you. With the pleasure of observing this district and students.
Anthony assures me that dinner is here, so we'll take a five minute.
I don't want it to get lonely.
Yeah. We'll take a five minute break and get back.
All right, good evening. I'm here to talk a little bit about the 2019-2020 Chromebook purchase. This is a continuation of the April 15th board meeting. At that meeting, I had presented about options for teacher-touch Chrome devices. At the time, we were concerned about staying within the $500,000. At the time, we were concerned about staying within the $500,000 budget. This evening, we received bids for teachers and first graders having touch Chromebooks. But because of the cost of the teacher touch Chromebooks would have exceeded the budget by approximately $50,000 at this time without recommending. Teachers receive touch Chromebooks currently. Teachers have a device that is a non-touch unit. So I'll, tonight I'm only going to be recommending touch devices for first grade only. We still have an RFP for Chromebook cases for students at Miller. And that will close on July eighth, which I'll hopefully be bringing back to you at the July fifth board meeting. The estimated cost of the cases is approximately $13,000. So as you can see, the, the bid tally, CDW came in with the lowest amount for one thousand six hundred and five total Chromebooks and licensing. So I will be recommending that the board award CDW the bid for one thousand six hundred and five total Chromebooks and licensing as presented.
Questions for Josh?
May I have a motion to award to CDW four hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for sixteen oh five Chromebooks and licensing? And save will be used for that favor.
So moved.
Sorry. Carter Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Lisa?
I'm not finished yet.
Go away. You're by yourself.
I am. And I'm here to talk to you about, oh, to request approval after the presentation of the digital learning plan from last board meeting two weeks ago. We did incorporate your suggestion. And if there are no other questions, we'll just ask for a recommendation for approval.
Questions for Lisa? May I have a motion to approve the Marshawn Community School District Digital Learning Plan as presented?
Move for approval.
Second. Miller Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero.
Looks like I'm by myself again for the second one. I know Rachel had her first day of teaching at Lannahan today. So it's just me. But in the fall, Rachel Inks and I presented information about the new Iowa Seal of By Literacy. We were really excited to have this offered statewide. And Marshalltown made this available to all, all eligible students at the high school this school year. And so since November, there's been a process going on to work with teachers and to identify students who are eligible. And so we thought it'd be worthy to come back to you in June and share with you the outcome. And we were able to recognize twenty-four students with the Seal of By Literacy. And interestingly enough, kind of a mix of students in terms of the second language besides English that they presented. And we also had juniors who were able to achieve the Seal of By Literacy this year also. I'd say on behalf of the team, we learned a lot second semester about this process, about how much work this is to get students to read their emails and respond to surveys and persist with the test. The test that we gave the students. And the World Language and ESL department did an awesome job with us at the high school. They made personal contact with the students and the students would log in and take their tests in reading, writing, listening and speaking. And the test gives them immediate feedback. And if you do not get to a certain level on the first sub-test, some of the kids got very discouraged and did not persist and come back day two or three, which was unfortunate because they would have only had to have taken that part over again had they done well in the other three pieces. But I don't think the kids really quite understood that. So we learned a lot about how to communicate that with the kids and the students and to prepare them for that. And I'd say for our French department too, there were a lot of takeaways that they had because none of our students earned this, this year. None of our seniors earned it. But I know they're hoping to turn that number around for next school year.
Remind me, this, this, the test survived by the state?
They gave us a choice of tests. And so the team studied the ones available and picked the STEM test. And we are paying for the cost for the test the first time the students take it.
Other questions for Lisa?
One of them was, I believe Jocelyn Zerom. And no, there was Jane too. So two of our three student board members are in the SEAL. There were some high achieving ladies that were with us.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Marshalltown High School class of two thousand nineteen graduates. Typically, you receive this list prior to graduation, pending students fulfilling pedestrian requirements for graduation. This time you're receiving after the fact. So this is the exact list of students that were granted the diploma upon graduation. And we'll likely have another list coming before you, if not in July and August, students that didn't quite make the mark either at Marshalltown High School or M L A who fulfilled the requirements with summer school and additional work over the course of the summer.
Do you have a total numbers?
It's two, just over two, or just over three.
Do you know the graduation rate?
I think it's anticipated that what they think will happen this summer will be close to three twenty.
Do you know what that puts us at for graduation rate?
I don't know. And they use a calculation at the state where it's hard to figure it out on your own exactly anyway.
May I have a motion to approve 2019-2020? 2019, Marshalltown High School.
Standing.
Fletcher, Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero.
So as we do annually around this time, we're presenting to you for formal approval of the proposed meeting dates for the 2018-2020 school year.
There, in a quick look at these, the date, the very last date you have here, Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty. July fifteen is a Wednesday in two thousand twenty. I think maybe you mean Monday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, we can adjust the, we can amend it or change it and the provenance change.
Thank you for picking up on that.
Other questions for Dr. Shuji? May I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 school board meeting dates as amended?
Second.
Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero. Mr. Spargitas? Oh, before handbooks? Okay. Yes, true. So we're not doing that. I take it.
Correct.
Okay, so now we're on to modular tech.
So I'm excited to.
And we're way ahead, even with the dinner break.
So I provided you with some information in board notes. And I was really excited that there's a lot of synergy, especially within our local business community to support our desire to implement a modular tech lab to help promote career technical education as well as further STEM careers that are available right here in Marshall County. Some of the funding sources to help support it are Perkins Funds, which the high school historically has utilized. It's been pretty exclusive by high school. Most recently, the door's been opened by the federal government for it to be used at those schools as well. So we have $20,000 Perkins funding that will go towards this lab. And I was able to successfully lobby for another $20,000 through the original planning partnership, which is all the area schools, extending as far as Grimaldi Island falls on that. And a big part of that was because of the uniqueness of this lab and their hopes to come visit it someday to see what and if they can replicate. And then our local business and an industry is committed to helping fund twelve of the seventeen curriculum units thus far with number pending. Yet there are additional ones pending. So we're right at basically the cost to implement the lab. What I'm seeking for approval here is twofold, the sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. So roughly forty-three thousand dollar one-time expenditure on the curriculum. And then the other $25,000 is the furniture that will be necessary to, the mobile furniture that will be necessary to set up the lab.
Questions for Dr. Shuji? May I have a motion to approve the mod tech lab curriculum and furniture in the amount of sixty-nine, four thirty-one as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Carter Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero.
So roughly a year ago, I had come to you asking permission for us to set up classroom audio systems in Woodbury Elementary School. In the regular classrooms, we targeted Woodbury mainly because of it being a dual-language school and knowing that no matter which side of the language piece was a native language that it would be especially important for all of those students to be able to hear adequately regardless of where they sat in the classroom. So we had purchased systems through Lightspeed. Being asked about what's the future plan? And I had shared at that time that as long as things went swimmingly well, that we would be moving forward with a plan over time to implement this in all of the elementary schools. And so I'm asking for permission to use SAVE in order to do further implementation by bringing both Rogers Elementary as well as Anson Elementary onboard with their regular classrooms as well as their music slash art classrooms and their STEM classrooms. And that being said, there's also, and I asked for a couple additional systems to implement in the art, music and STEM classrooms at Woodbury. We chose those two schools next because they were listed by the state on the comprehensive list. So it makes sense to go to them next. You may wonder why, knowing that Anson's bigger than Rogers, Anson being a three-section school, Rogers a two-section school, why are there the same number of systems being asked for? And the reason is because as you may know, Anson has a number of open-air classrooms. And in the past, when they've utilized voice enhancement systems, like for special needs purposes, it has created more difficulties with voices traveling between classrooms. And the technology, I'm sure, has improved significantly. But we're not, I'm not comfortable recommending deploying those audio systems in those rooms at the times. We're focused on the enclosed classrooms and the mostly enclosed classrooms that are adjacent to the library and our open classroom space at Anson. And then we will pilot a couple mobile units with teachers in that open classroom, probably at the fall after school gets started to make a determination of whether those classrooms are viable or not.
Questions? May I have a motion to approve the classroom audio systems in the amount of forty thousand and fifty-four dollars as presented? Sales tax will be used to fund this expenditure.
So moved. Same.
Miller Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero. We will come back to five oh three. Mr. Spargitas?
All right, so the first tenant agreement tonight we have up is the tenant agreement between the Marshalltown Education Association and the district. And as you can see, there is a lot of information on here that outlines what is staying in the contract. There are some sections and articles and then others that will be moved out to a handbook appendix based on our last mediation session with the teachers. It's the doctor.
It's what?
The percentage of percent increase.
It's the percent.
Okay. Oh, it's up there, okay. I was looking at the documents, sorry. All right, so the percent increase for the package was 1.91%.
Questions?
And you had mentioned the employee handbook, so basically that's under review by your training for support splitter at this time.
Yeah, there were some additional changes that needed to be made based on bargaining settlements to the, just to the specific employee group sections of it.
May I have a motion to approve the MEA certified staff salary and benefits settlement for 2019-20, the new contract and a salary of 1.91% increase as presented?
Is it, I see it's written on there, 2019-2020. Pretty sure we, so the subject says nineteen to twenty-one, but then the body says nineteen to twenty. So it's a two-year agreement with a re opener for wages conversations after this next year. So the language pieces are two years.
Move for approval.
Miller Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero.
All right, our next one is, is our food service group. And the district in this case and the association came to an agreement. It's a 1.78% package on salary FICA hypers. And then below is listed the articles that stay in the contract, which are, I would say largely just procedural. And then the articles that will be coming out.
It is a one-year.
Yeah, all the rest of these are one-year.
Questions for Anthony? May I have a motion to approve the agreement between the district and the nutrition professionals for the 2019-20 school year? A one-year agreement with an increase of 1.78%. Heitman Hernandez, all in, sorry, Fletcher Hernandez, right?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries six zero.
All right, on to bus drivers and monitors. Under the wages area on this agreement, we have it separated out by drivers and mechanics and then monitors. So 2.5% package for drivers and mechanics and 1.44%. So 2.5% package for drivers and mechanics and 1.44% for monitors. The district and the association also agreed to increase the trip pay by 50 cents for the drivers. And we made a small change to the way the wages are listed in the agreement because they were listed both hourly and salary. And we had some employees whose letters were listed as a salary and some was an hourly, so we just changed that to be all hourly. And then the articles that are remaining in the contract, very similar to the last one, largely procedural and/or wages, and then the articles there at the bottom that will be coming into the handbook.
Questions for Anthony? May I have a motion to approve the agreement between the district and the bus drivers and monitors for the 2019-20 school year, a one-year agreement as presented?
Sold.
Heidman Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries six to zero.
All right, our last one, B&amp;G, their package is equivalent to 2.85% and...
Would you say that again?
Yes, their package is equivalent to 2.85%. And then the articles, as in the last two, are very similar, but are staying in the contract or going to the handbook.
Questions for Mr. Spaghetis? May I have a motion to approve the agreement between the district and buildings and grounds for the 2019-20 school year, a one-year agreement with a 2.85% increase as presented?
All for approval.
Miller Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries six to zero.
I just want to say quickly, thank you to all the board members and directors and Dr. Shuji and Paulette, who assisted in the bargaining process as this year was challenging for not only the district and but the associations too, to navigate the new collective bargaining law and the environment we're in with bargaining. So I just wanted to say thank you for all your work and coming to the meetings and providing your input and expertise.
Thank you.
Paulette, do you want to speak to the searchers?
Sure, sure. So for the secretaries, what we're recommending is cents on sales depending on which category they are in. So we have different categories. We have a 10-month secretary, building secretary, central office secretaries, and executive assistant to the superintendent. This wage structure was changed a couple of years ago, I think, for the secretaries. So what we're recommending is either a 20 cent, 30 cent, or 40 cent per hour increase based on whichever category classification they are in for next year. And that will be a 2.2% increase for the group.
Questions for Paulette? May I have a motion to approve a salary increase of 2.2% for the secretary's 2019-20 school year as presented? Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries six to zero.
So for administrators, directors, and others mirroring the MEA increase, I'm recommending 1.91% for administrators, directors, and others. The only exception to that being in an effort to continue to place our upper management technology positions, namely the server specialist, network security specialist, I'm just actually one of the position. Student technology device coordinator that's on the master list, we're recommending a 2.82 or essentially double the 1.91% increase to get closer to a competitive wage for light positions in the public and private sector.
Questions for Dr. Shuji? May I have a motion to approve the administrators, including superintendent, directors, and others mentioned for the 2019-20 school year as presented?
Sold.
Heidman Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries six to zero. Okay, Paulette, who are you?
And does this mean I have an hour and 20 minutes to talk about the audit?
Yeah, it does. No. Just want to tell you where I have the schedule.
And your job is to keep this.
Yeah.
I'll do my best. Let me get plugged in here so I can drive. This court does not always cooperate with me. It doesn't twist like it wants to. There we go.
All Josh had to do was stand up. Want right in.
All right, so I'm going to drive rather quickly through our 78, 80-page audit, I think. So we recently received our final fiscal 18 audit from the auditor of state's office. It was released a couple of weeks ago, and I believe you were all, you all received email digital copies of it. Typically, we want to have our audit and present it in December or January, much earlier than we are this year, but due to some unique circumstances that we encountered, we're running a little bit behind schedule this year. So this is the audit for the period of July 1st, 2017 to June 30, 2018. So it's almost a year old now. So we're going to kind of focus on the narrative rather than the numbers in this report. An audit is an examination of our financial statements in order to provide an opinion as to whether our financial statements are presented fairly in all material, presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The first part of our independent auditor's report tells us what the opinion is. This is the most important part of your audit. Their management is responsible for the presentation of the financial statements. The auditors come in and they express an opinion based on those financial statements. And good news is that our opinion is the best opinion that we could receive, which is an unmodified opinion. So that's, that's the good news. There's also a couple other things in the auditor's report that, that they bring to your attention. One of them is a change in an accounting standard that was adopted during fiscal 18 Keep in mind too, that we are required by the Iowa code to have an audit each and every year or so. The next section of the audit is the management's discussion and analysis, and this section basically is what the auditors think are important things to highlight for the district. One of the things that they pointed out in our financial highlights, and we are well aware of it, and we've discussed it several times at the board table, is in regards to our general fund. This is the fund that the ending fund balance for fiscal 18 had a significant decline, a 30.4% decrease. So that's one thing that they noted in, in the M D and A. That actually goes into our solvency ratio, which we talked about in depth during the certified budget process. Our solvency ratio went from about 6.7 to 4.5 at the end of fiscal 18. Also goes into some government-wide analysis, which the government-wide statements, there's two government-wide statements, and they basically eliminate the inter-fund transfers and such that go on between all of our funds. A couple other things to point out in this, this beginning section are in regards to the district's capital assets. Marshalltown School District has approximately $98.5 million in capital assets. When we look at that net of depreciation, we're at about $69 million. In regards to our long-term debt, the district at June 30th, 2018, had just under $30 million in outstanding long-term debt for those assets. This is significantly below our constitutional debt limit, so that's, that's good. And then the last part of this section is where we can indicate what some economic factors bearing on the district's future are. So they've discussed in here that we did receive a 5% increase in our valuations for fiscal '20, which is, was really, really good news. The next two statements are the government-wide. We're going to skip to the governmental funds. And these funds will be in, broken down between our general, our debt service, capital projects, and non-major. The non-major is going to include the management levy, the activity fund, and pearl. The most important thing to look at when we're looking at the numbers, or, you know, from, from your perspective, is probably the change in fund balances. So we, I've highlighted those in here. The only fund, we did have, as we mentioned a minute ago, the decrease in the fund balance for the general fund. Our debt service and our capital projects funds all had increases in their fund balance. Capital project increase was mainly due to the refinancing and the roundhouse phase two project that was still in progress. The non-major funds, activity fund, the ending fund balances increased there a bit. Management levy and the pearl, those fund balances are purposely being spent down a little bit, so there was a decrease in, in those two fund balances. The next section of the audit is the notes to the financial statements. There's a lot of great information in here. If you want to read through all of it, I'm not going to do that because I don't have until 7:30, I guess. But there's several, several notes in here as far as account, significant accounting practices, policies, capital assets, liabilities, pension expense, which is hypers, our other post-employment benefit options. There's notes and a lot of narrative that go into those different topics. The one note that I did want to point out, as we spoke to before, there was an accounting change. We adopted GASP statement 75 in fiscal 18, and that has to do with other post-employment benefits, which is our early retirement incentive and such. So that was a change that was adopted for that year. The next section is called RSI, or Required Supplementary Information. The most important thing in this section is that it talks about our budget, the certified budget. And this will tell you that during the year ended June 30th, 2018, we did not exceed our certified budget in any of the four functional areas. It will also, in another place in this report, share that we did do one budget amendment over, over a year ago. We did that in May of 2018, so. Another report in here that's going to look a lot different to you guys this year is our activity fund accounts. I think it was presented differently in the past. We are presenting it actually by activity or extracurricular activity now. So this is going to look a little bit different to you than it has in the past. And as you can see, we have a lot of, a lot of extracurricular things going on for the Finally, we're going to get to the last part. The, the section that most people turn to right away is the back part of the report because that's where you find, find your comments and findings of the audit. But I wanted to go through a couple of terms here with you before we get to that. So the independent auditor's report on internal control, which is issued to the Board of Education, will explain to you that there are, there can be things found in the audit that could be a material weakness. A material weakness is, there's a reasonable possibility a material misstatement of the district's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. Less severe than a material weakness is a deficiency or a significant deficiency. This is also, you know, according to governmental auditing standards, a significant deficiency is also important enough to merit attention by those charged with governments themselves and administration. So it's important to remember the differences between those two things. Finally, after that, there's compliance and other matters. The auditors perform tests for compliance, but you have to remember that an audit is, provides reasonable assurance. It does not provide absolute assurance. There's no way that anyone could test 100% of our transactions. So they tell us here that they noted certain immaterial instances of non-compliance, but they did not test everything. So not all transactions that might have had an impact on the comments weren't necessarily The next report is the same kind of report, just based on our major program, which is our food service program. That's federally funded, so that gets its own report and has the same definitions for material weaknesses and deficiencies. So the schedule of findings in question costs. The summary, we got an unmodified, unmodified opinion. This is good. The one, you know, the one material weakness that we did have reported in our report this year, of course, was the segregation of duties. We have focused in the past year on rectifying a lot of the segregation of duties issues within the payroll function. They've also listed cash inventory and receipts. Our next focus, which we are just starting to have some meetings and stuff about, is on the cash process. They go on to explain in here that the segregation of duties comment is not uncommon in districts even of our size. It's hard to have enough people employed to separate all the functions that need to be separated. So the district has a limited number of employees. They recommended that we continue to review those activities, and our response was that we would continue to monitor the situation and continue to segregate as much as possible with our current staff. We are also going to be reaching out to some staff at the buildings to help us set up some more internal controls, especially over cash. Significant deficiencies, we had four of them listed. Remember, these are less severe than the material weaknesses. The disaster recovery plan and the computer systems comments, Josh and I went back and forth with them on. This is kind of a antiquated comment, I think, because right now so much of what we do is in the cloud. It's not paper-based. It's not, you know, it's not like you have to have a stock of checks sitting off somewhere. So hopefully we can make the minor adjustments that they are recommending there. The other one, the third one, is negative lunch account balances. This is a repeat from, repeat comment from last year. The issue with the negative lunch account... The issue with the negative lunch account balances is that in the federal code for the school lunch programs, it states that food service funds cannot have bad debt, but yet our state law requires us to feed students, so it's a little bit conflicting there. So what we reported was that, you know, the law requires us to do this and we'll continue to monitor it. Computer systems, this one was another one that Josh and I talked to them about. We do have some policies, some statements within board policy, but one of the things that we're going to do is include those in our employee handbooks going forward, so that I think our employees are probably more likely to read the handbooks than they are board policy. And then inventory. This is something that I'm working on with Lynn in regards to testing all of the inventory that we have in the food service program. The last part, Part Four, these things are all immaterial non-compliance. That doesn't mean that they don't matter. It just means that they're not material. We had three items in here that were commented on. The one that I will wanna show you, because we're gonna be working on this in the upcoming year, is the Student Activity Fund. You saw that long list, about two pages, of different things that we have in the Student Activity Fund. We do have some money sitting in that fund that doesn't really appear to be for an actual student activity or athletic. One of the things, one example, is high school parking lot fees. So these are things that we're correcting as we go and will be working on over the next year, so you're gonna see some, probably, some of those changes come before you at some point, too.
Questions for Paula?
I think that you're gonna get the segregation of duties thing of training and use your building staff differently and better with respect to correcting and reconciling.
That is definitely the intent.
Other questions?
Yes, real quick, this was out of the board, I believe, the media, CEO, top board guy, it's published anywhere else.
That's a good point. Yes, the auditor of state's website has all 330 school districts audits, has city audits. Every audit that they do is out on their website. There's about 10 years' worth of audits out there, so you can go read on.
Other questions? May I have a motion to accept the fiscal year 2017-18 audit as presented?
So.
Miller Carter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero.
Interrupting. I'll let you drive now. The next item on the agenda is the proposal, the proposed recommended contract for audit services for fiscal '19, which we are just finishing up this month, fiscal '20 and fiscal '21. If you wanna go to the other one, the other, there you go. So we requested RFPs from six different firms that do governmental auditing, auditing specifically for schools and have experience there. We received four responses back, which is a really good response rate. Out of those four firms, there is a criteria or evaluation list that the auditor of state recommends, and Randy and I used that evaluation to go through each of the firms. Two firms really rose to the top, which was Hogan Hansen and Firm B. As you can see by the summary here, our concern with Firm B was that they came in only 300 hours when all three of the other firms came in at 425. So the cost per hour for Hogan Hansen, you can see there, is not the least expensive, but they definitely do an excellent job at what they do and will provide us a great service. So my recommendation would be to approve the contract for Hogan Hansen for fiscal '19, '20, and '21.
Questions for Paula?
I think it's good to know that this audit will have almost three times the total number of hours in it by the auditing firm as the last one.
It also had the highest rate of management.
Yes.
Rather than just some staff.
Right. And that's something I personally really appreciate, is having access to that experience.
All of those reasons for not going with the lowest bid.
Exactly.
Other questions?
Just a one-year, one-year?
Three-year.
Three-year, okay.
May I have a motion to approve the fiscal 2019 to '21 Financial State Statement Audit Contract with Hogan Hansen for $35,000, $36,000, and $37,000 respectively?
Second.
Is that a fluctuation? Heightman Carter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero. And now that it is eight o'clock, sir. Come on up.
She's trying to under-promise and over-deliver.
I do just the opposite. Came here to talk about change orders for Phase Two of the Roundhouse construction. We had a total of $32,505 worth of change orders. This has been modified and agreed to between all parties involved, but where we lowered it down to this, there were some, a lot of give and take with FEH, us and Ball Team. We did a lot of negotiating in the team room, and so we got this down to $32,505, which is, in my estimation, is very reasonable. There were some of these that were caused by some issues with some site conditions and with some site documents. And so what I am recommending is that we accept the change orders for $32,505.
Questions for Chuck?
I think you mentioned in a previous conversation on the notes, is part of that being paid by FEH or is ours?
Yeah, FEH will be paying $5,000.
Of that $32,000? It's just the change in the contract, obviously. Our responsibility, portion of it.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve the Marshalltown High School Roundhouse Phase Two Change Order Number Four in the amount of $32,505 as presented?
Second.
Carter Miller? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero. No more money. You can't come back.
I'm next. Oh, no more money for Phase Two.
Not so fast.
I have a proposal to replace about 5,600 square feet of playground at Holland Elementary. It's the asphalt playground that's in the southeast section of the play area. I secured some bids, and I am recommending that we accept the bid of Kleezner Construction Incorporated for a total of $38,950 plus $175 to add another half inch of lift to the surface, so that we, I wanna make sure that our bids were apples to apples. The other bid was three inches, this one was two and a half. I asked them to bring it up to three inches, and they added the 175. So $38,950 plus 175, Paula, it's exactly more than that.
So the first two and a half inches, the cost, last half inches.
So I'm asking approval to approve this bid from Kleezner Construction.
We got local bids, too. This was just the best one.
Yes.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve Kleezner Construction to replace 55, 95 square feet of playground at Holland in the amount of $38,950 plus 175 as presented?
Move for move.
Miller Hernandez? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero. Now no more money. Until you go back the next time.
Season's July.
Gaga pits.
Not related to.
So if you recall, the original hope for all the physical education recreation levy was to focus our attention on repairs at Holland and then also looking at the demolition of the Franklin home features and the replacement of playground space in lieu of the features. Couple things happened since that original vision, one of which was getting the community-built playground grant at Woodbury, which then resulted in our desire and your approval to put rubber surfacing down at Woodbury on that playground space, which you approved. And then, of course, moving forward on Holland like we did today, where we ran into a bit of a snag is at the Franklin project, which was significantly more costly than we originally anticipated. So, that being said, tentatively, we're looking at pursuing that project possibly exclusively with Pearl next year, and would like for the board approval to put a new piece of playground equipment at all six elementary schools as well as Lenahan Intermediate. It's called a Gaga pit or Gaga hole pit. It's a modified and gentler, Mr. Miller, version of dodgeball. I'm excited you get it, that Lenahan dodgeball.
I got killed.
It's something that you see often installed on new school playgrounds and stuff. It will be very popular for both our phys ed classes, our recess, and community use in the off-hours. We will be looking at volunteer construction engineers, putting them together. They come fairly pre-ready to assemble, with the exception of, we're gonna put ADA doors in each of them, which will require a little bit of construction skill and some cutouts so that the smaller kids can easily climb into the pit and climb out.
Josh, would you scroll down to the picture for the community purpose? Thank you.
Most of the colors still have any glaze?
Because.
You should get ads on them for Marshalltown.
That'll come out of the cradle, buddy.
Jazz it up. Well, in that case, let's put some sight words and math facts. What's the material on the side?
It's composite wood, so, you know, we wanted it to be as durable, long-lasting as possible, and it's pretty heavy-duty brackets. On the top is a polyurethane cover just to provide a little softer and smoother surface on the top, especially with people rolling over.
Are they movable?
They are very heavy, so it would require, this is, they are if you disassemble them and then choose to move them, but all of that will come on a truck that Chuck's staff will gratefully unload, and then we'll be traveling to each of the sites with the stuff ready to build.
So it's a T A and a slot D kind of thing?
Yeah, with the exception of those cutouts that you see that we'll have to do, and then the provisions for the ADA doors.
As a recovering principal of a Gaga pit preschool school, like kids, this took, like, all kinds of scheduling, because they were so popular. Like, the girls in 1A got to go on Mondays, and the boys in 1B on Tuesdays, and then we mixed it up on Fri- I mean, it was popular. You can only have so many little Gaga's in there at one time, but they get, they get out of.
They advertise them more than they're.
I would, as a principal, I would say no. Should be limits to the number of little people in there.
Any questions for Dr. Schutie and Gaga? May I have a motion to approve the purchase of seven Gaga pits as presented in the amount of $23,503.70?
So.
Second.
Heightman Miller? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Now, would you all like to take a break until 8:30 for the ounces?
Yeah, I think let's just push on.
Push on, push on.
Been here for a while, let's see if we can get a bed.
Okey-dokey.
You really do have it, don't you? Okay, on to policies.
502.13 and 502.13E1, student name changes and student preferred name or gender change application. These were new policies, as I mentioned, that'd be drafted with our attorney's help in order to better this out to aid such requests from students. There are no changes to this since they were originally presented to recommend approval and waiving the second reading.
Can we scroll through that a little slower? Sorry.
May I have a motion to adopt and to waive the second reading of 502.13 and 502.13E1?
So.
Heightman Miller? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
Yes.
711.3 Extracurricular Activities Bus Service, and 711.4 Summer School Program Transportation Services. These were two policies that we amended incorporating IASB language. We amended any changes since they were last presented to you. I would recommend approving and waiving the second reading.
May I have a motion to amend and waive the second reading of 711.3 and 711.4?
So.
Heightman Hernandez? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero.
Read.
Yep.
711.5 Transportation Non-Resident and Non-Public School Students. I would recommend mark as reviewed if it is in line with the IASB.
Any questions for Sean? Okay.
I'm going to go with seven eleven point seven, which will become seven eleven point six. It's just a renumbering, otherwise it'd mark it as reviewed.
Questions for Sean? Okay.
And then, seven eleven eight, there's one addition in there about notification by addition of social media, but otherwise it is the same, so I don't.
Is that enough of a change that you'd like it to come back? Or would you like to mark it as reviewed?
I think that adding social media gets it in line with what actual practice is doing. I find that marking as reviewed provides.
Would anyone like it to come back? Mark it as reviewed.
And then, current seven eleven six will become seven eleven nine, but there are some changes to that one.
And the two deductible changes are the changes that I was referencing, although we amended the agenda that if you had looked at this policy as of even this morning, those numbers would have been changed since then because we received an email today verifying the amounts of.
So, that one will.
So, it needs to go back.
Come back. Are there any questions for Sean before we leave it today? Okay, it'll come back. Doctor Schutie, is it?
It's covered views.
It's on the list.
Four oh one.
Can we, can we start at the bottom? There's four new policies that we're recommending, the seven oh five point four, seven oh five point four R one, which both have to do with expenditures for a public purpose, seven oh seven point five internal controls, and seven oh seven point five R one internal control procedures. These are two policies and two regulations that IASB, I'm going to get it, IASB issued a policy primer on for school districts a couple months ago, so these would be recommended to adopt. The other policies are kind of tied into these new policies.
Let's take care of those new policies.
Okay.
Are there any questions for Paula at this time on those four policies? They will need to come back if they have to.
The other policies, employee travel compensation, recognition for service of employees, credit cards, employee use of cell phones in that regulation, and death of student staff or board, or board director member, those all have minor changes to align with these new policies regarding internal controls and public purpose for expenditures.
So, we have four oh one eight, four oh one ten, four oh one twelve, and four oh one twelve R that have changes made. Any questions on those at this time?
I'm wondering on four oh one eight, is that one of the ones you mentioned?
Four oh one point seven also.
With four oh one point eight, there was just a clarification on that recommendation for service of employees, which was to set four-year service and just change it to four one-year service. I'm not sure if that could be marked as reviewed or not come back.
So, that's four oh one eight?
Yes.
Questions, comments?
It's nothing really changed, it's just a quite clarification.
Mark as reviewed? Okay, four oh one point eight is not as reviewed, but four oh one seven, ten, twelve, and twelve R will need to come back. Transportation?
Okay, yes, I did. Yep. So, that takes care of it.
Sorry to be covering seven oh five nine.
I mean, that's part of the current policy that needs to be changed to align with the policies.
Come back.
Okay.
We have three or four checks and balances here. What a deal.
Doesn't go far for you to do that.
Any items of note?
Nothing, I guess the end-of-year staff day was a really nice day. A lot of staff rewarded and it went really well, so.
Looking at reminders, July fifteenth is our next meeting. We have interviews on July second, and for Ross's position, you will receive other information as they grow s newer, wanting to know how many candidates we have, et cetera. Also, now is the time to evaluate the board, to board self-evaluation. So, I will email it to you. You've all participated in that before, so when you get it and you have questions, please feel free to ask. They come back to me, I will summarize them for you, get the information back to you, and we will need to meet sometime in July after our board meeting on the fifteenth. In those last couple of weeks, to set our goals as well as Theron's goals. And you will have in front of you at that time Theron's evaluation as well as the summary statements that you have added for the board self-evaluation. So, start looking at those July, end of July calendars for a work session. We'll put out a survey. Doctor Schutie, will you do that?
Send out the evaluation?
No, you're going to send out a question as to when people are available. Mike has our policies for July. Committee reports, is there anything? Finance and facilities had a joint committee meeting. What else was covered besides what we've already talked about?
I felt like every single thing we talked about before me was in the finance meeting, so I'm not sure there's any new information though.
I think it was a two and a half hour meeting, so it's probably need to.
But it helped us speed right through it.
Yeah.
Did through that. Doctor Schutie has report from, is there any?
Nothing to report. We had, we had a really well-attended meeting this morning, actually, so there's quite a bit to report on. We've gotten update from Marshall County on courthouse renovations and rebuild, and it looks like now, so the standard completion is probably pushed out to around March first with some significant interior work taking place this early fall. Sounds like there'll likely be a phased reentry of occupants, depending on floors or levels that taken care of. Also talked a little bit further about some bridge closures, which we had already made plans transportation-wise through Director Kozak to reroute some of our bus routes. That's been delayed as well due to the weather and other things, so it looks like there could be some intermittent closures for particular things yet this summer, but probably starting next fall could be a year for them to get everything done. Doctor Robin Lomenthall from MCC talked a little bit about the transitioning of Doctor Dree's retirement and Doctor Christine Fisher coming in. I believe tomorrow at four thirty, there's a celebration service for Doctor Dree at the MCC campus. Chamber of Commerce talked about the fact that KCRG is going to be featuring the whole week ending with the anniversary of the tornado on the nineteenth of July with a feature of Marshalltown. We're actually doing some filming at the roundhouse tomorrow. I know that Shane and Jessica Kinzer and Kelly Lezier went to Cedar Rapids for either a filming or a meeting earlier, but that that whole week there, going to be featured in Marshalltown, which will be good. I was taking the university extension, so that's a real busy time with their partnering with summer school, with STEM camps, with garden clubs and such. Lynn Oberding also talked about, from the Chamber standpoint, the dissolving of marginal partnership and the realignment of the entities under the umbrella of the Chamber, Medic, and Visitor Convention Bureau. She also encouraged people to take a look at downtown master plan, which I think is posted on the city website, which is a pretty exciting vision for the future of downtown.
Doctor Schutie went on.
About the great things happening in Marshall County schools. Now, I simply mentioned that we are having a change in the HR director position, and I talked a little bit about some safety walkthroughs relative to school crossings that we're going to be doing in conjunction with our insurance company sometime in July.
Other committees that have been out that I neglected to put? What have we done this evening to enrich the educational experiences of our students?
What Chromebooks, guys?
Sixteen hundred Chromebooks.
Seven Gaga ball pit.
And I'm sure they'll be looking for volunteers to help put TAD-A and slot-B.
For three hundred-plus graduates?
Seal it up, there's some.
Well, in honor of Doctor Ryan having worked with Barack Obama, my quote for tonight comes from Barack Obama. It's also important for where we are right now and what we're doing at the board table. Change will not come if we wait for some other person or if we wait for some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. May I have a motion to adjourn before nine o'clock?
Somebody?
Second. Fletcher Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries six zero. Thank you all.